Call this meeting to order. September 2nd, 2025. Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Bridge?
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor James Mosby?
Present. So, before we go into closed session, oral communications. Anybody out there?
Mayor, I want to announce, before we go into the closed session, that Councilmember Bridge, due to a real property interest on item number one, is going to be recusing himself from that closed session.
Okay, very good. See, nobody else rise for oral communications, we'll close oral communications, we're going into closed session. Hopefully, we'll be up by 6:30, we have three items on there. Number one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, and public employment title city manager, and conference with laborers negotiator agency designated Representative Jeff Malawi. City Attorney and Representative Employee City Manager. With that, we will move to closed session. We are back from closed session. 6:41, roll call please.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Bridge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor James Mosby?
Present. Mr. City Attorney, any report on action in closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council met and discussed the three items in closed session listed on the agenda. The Council gave direction to staff, but there was no reportable action taken.
Very good. Invocation, Pastor Nate Marsh.
Let's pray. God almighty, Creator sustainer of all things, we seek your face, knowing that we are not worthy, not worthy of your thoughts, your concerns, we don't even share your consistent commitment to good, especially when good costs us personally. Most of our intentions are selfish and not sacrificial, or even considerate of the weak. Forgive us. Listen to our requests out of your abundance of mercy and grace and love. Hear us because of your great character and your own reputation. God, you have placed us in positions of authority and honor. According to your purposes, give aid to our tasks, particularly this council. Their duties influence this city, and there are many in need of mercy and grace. But God, there are those whose hearts glory in destruction and chaos, who love power over truth and worship results over your ways. Show your terrifyingly unending justice to perpetrators of evil, and give this council wisdom on how to discern truth and respond rightly. There are those in this community that seek rights beyond justice, and those that prey upon the kind hearts of their neighbors. Repay them according to their deeds and expose their self-serving hearts, and make their shame a public display. Drown them in guilt until they relent in submission to you. God, there are many things that we must give you praise, many things that should turn our hearts to worship you, your provision, your beauty in this city, your protection, your opportunity to grow in understanding. You are a good God. Guard your people who desire peace. Empower your people who act according to your ways. Judge the wicked, remove their influence, so those that might consider their past would shy away in fear. We pray knowing your power. We pray knowing our weakness. And we pray knowing you respond to the humble and tear down the proud. Act, Almighty God, for your purpose, your character, and your glory. Amen.
Please show me a pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to take a minute to thank the Aquatic Center for all the work they did over the last two weeks and let everybody know that the Aquatic Center is open. It would have been nice on during the hot days, they kind of went swimming, but just worked out that way. We also, I also want to let everybody know that the basketball league, starting for kindergarten through eighth grade, and also we got some new programs for yoga classes. Those will be starting September 5th on a Friday. Calling for art for the library. They'll be accepting art at the Grossman Gallery from 4:00 to 4:45 on September 18th. They'll be displayed at the gallery and also at the village, and it's for people 18 and up to submit. So, it's really fun stuff to look at. Want to take a minute to thank the Facilities Department. If you guys got a chance to walk around the building, I was really impressed, one day I came to work and they were taping it off, and next thing you know, they painted the whole building, and I was like, wow. All in-house, so I was really impressed with them, good job, you guys. I wanted to thank the strike team again, Cody's out there fighting fires. I think he started, the Gifford came back a little, and they did an apple fire, now the Dillon fire. So, I want to thank them for going out and fighting those fires for us. We got some cult stuff coming up. We got four routes that'll be on H Street. I think that starts tonight. And also some, we have routes from Mission Plaza all the way to the transit over on Cypress and I, so you can utilize those. We also have some on-demand ride-share services coming up. There's also another number of options that you can do, such as a monthly pass, ten punch. So, I encourage you to look into those, and that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions? Couple quick questions for you. I noticed there was a court ruling recently on right-of-way maintenance charges? Right-of-way charges? You want to fill the council in on that one here recently, they just haven't?
Well, there's potential that they won't let cities charge utilities for using the roads. But I think that us and legal are trying to decipher through what that really means for our city. What is direct, what's indirect, and what costs we could maybe modify, so we'll have them on board to come back on that.
It could be as much as over $3 million, right?
Could be, yeah.
Another question, we had two ordinances we passed back in March, and I wonder if you had anything to comment on those? That was, well, we had ordinance 172325 in particular, that was the camping ordinance, chapter 840 of our code. How are we doing with that? I mean, is it working for us, or do we need to enhance it? What do you think?
I think that's something you might want to come back with. Jeff, if you want to come, I don't know what those two were, they're not allowed to camp on different public areas.
The first one that the mayor described was the ordinance prohibiting camping on private and public property, and also storing personal property on public property. And then I think probably the second one you mentioned was the Transit Facilities Ordinance that prevents camping.
I just referenced one, but then the code that went with 840, but that's the other one we did pass, correct?
Yes.
And we can come back with some more information on that if you like.
It's on the future agenda list for October 25th.
It's on the future agenda list, so we'll be coming back with that, thank you.
What I found interesting is I had some interaction with the PD today, this weekend, and the, one of them I was talking to had no idea that we had a, no camping ordinance already. It would be great if we had one, but anyhow. Heads up with that, and if we need to get some more teeth in there for them, let us know, I'm sure we've got a group that would love to help everybody help.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, it was the City Manager. All right, and we'll open it up to public comment on consent calendar. Man, we got a good consent calendar. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven items on consent calendar. Got approval of the minutes from May 27?
Never mind, go ahead. I was going to say, if you could, Mayor, we would like to, staff would like to pull number six and continue it to a later date.
That's where all the fun was going to be denied.
Yes, sir.
All right, so staff with willingness and council will pull item number six. Okay, so number one was the approval of minutes from May 27, 2025, and the regular meeting of June 3rd, 2025. Approval and ratification of expenditures, payroll, July 18th, 2025, of 2.16 million. And a voucher register, July 28th through August 1st, 2025, of 2.2 million. Another voucher register, August 4th through 8th, 2025, of 1.5 million. And we're adopting a resolution of 6772, parentheses 25, approving amendment number six, and MOU with IBW, establishing new economic specialist classification. Do we need to pull that one as well, what we're doing six, or is that one okay? Amending city classification and compensation pay plans accordingly?
I believe that one's okay.
We're okay to keep that one on?
Yes, Mayor, number three is fine, it doesn't have anything to do with number six.
Okay. Number four, adopt resolution 6769, approving authorizes the City Manager does need to execute third-phase agreement for energy storage service agreement with Trolley Pass Project LLC. And number five is award of police department dispatch center renovation project to David Construction and Management, the amount of $155,800. Award of Anderson Rec Center mold remediation and ceiling tile replacement project to Olivera's Fashion Floors, restoration, the amount of $159,000. And direct the City Manager to execute the agreements, direct the purchasing materials manager to issue POs. Number six, which we're pulling, which was the amendment of classifications via resolution. And number seven is approval additional national opioid settlement, Purdue Pharma LP, Sackler, family adopters, there's the number 6773, parentheses 24, authorizes the City Manager to execute settlement documents. Does Council have any short questions or want to pull any of those items other than item six, which, do we need to get three to approve, or are we good to pull already on item six?
We're just going to table it and bring it back later, so just do not vote on that one.
Good deal, okay. Councilmember Bridge?
I would just like a clarification on item three. Item three lists the essential functions of 1 through 14. Is my understanding correct that these positions will focus on those functions?
Yeah, Gabe, did you want to speak on that?
Thank you, Councilmember Bridge, Mayor Mosby, members of the council. Yes, the job description that's going to be adopted tonight, should Council approve those, that job description, that will then become the position classification, and those duties will be performed by those individuals that will be reclassified into those. So, the two positions are reclassified, will then become the Economic Development Specialist, which they will operate under that job description.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to pull item number... Where is the... Item number four, for more discussion, that's... That's the third battery storage unit, yeah. Pull that one, so that'll be heard. This is again, before the first oral communication, after the written communications? Is that what it states here? At the end of the meeting. Yeah, immediately before the second oral communication. Everybody else get with everything else?
I had a quick question on one item, if I may.
Go ahead and ask.
I guess this might be for the police chief, this is a small-dollar item, but number seven has to do with the opioid settlement. I know, over the past few years, we've decided to keep that money versus collaborating or doing something with the county. I'd just love for you to reaffirm that we're headed in the right direction. We're, it's better for us to utilize that money, and are we seeing any sort of outreach or results from that funding that we're getting?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Ball. So, originally, there was a plan in the county that the cities would contribute all their funds to an effort to educate the whole county on how to manage and deal with some of these addiction issues and getting them into some help. That has never come to fruition. So, had we handed this money over, the county would have been able to do whatever they wanted within the parameters of the grant or whatever it's called. But in the end, we have control over this funding, and we've already used it to a certain degree, now the fire department has purchased Narcan with it. We are currently finalizing a video that we'll be putting out on all the local news agencies on how to address, manage, and seek help for family members, loved ones, that are fighting the addiction to these drugs. We're going to continue to work on these programs and develop them even stronger, creating some more videos, and look at some other options as well as far as working with maybe even some of the homeless advocates for those individuals that have these addictions to see if we can't help place them somewhere to get off of these drugs and start leading a better life. So, there's a number of options in play. I think our first step was just to finalize this video, get it out, see how it's received and how we can work on it and make it even more than it is.
Thank you for that, I know it's still an issue that's, you know, somewhat of an epidemic that still affects our community, so just appreciate that thoughtful utilization of those funds within our city, taking on what we know is an issue here, so thank you for that update.
All right, before I take the motion, it's already up there. Yeah, let me close public comment. Okay, we got a motion?
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't know you were going to speak when I pushed the button, so. I make the motion that we accept the consent calendar. We're pulling number four, I believe, to the end, and tabling six, if I heard that correctly.
Councilmember Vega, you got a second on that?
That's correct, second.
All right, go ahead and vote. And that passes by zero. Do you have any staff presentations, announcements? No? As per agenda, nothing else, okay. Oral communications, we have a three-minute oral communication to the public? Items in general? See, nobody rise, oh, are you an oral communicator?
Hello, Council and Mayor. Yep, that's what I do, I'm an oral communicator. I'm also known as the Santa Barbara County Karen, if you ask any of the Board of Supervisors down in Santa Barbara. So, I have started a YouTube channel called Coast Audits on YouTube, where I am a First Amendment auditor, and I'm focusing on law enforcement in our entire county. I invite everyone to subscribe to my channel, and I'll see more of you, I'm sure. Thank you.
Anybody else, oral communications? All right, close that, and moving on to item number eight. Update to the General Plan Safety Element, adoption of resolution 6771, parentheses 25, amending the General Safety Plan, General Plan Safety Element, and adopting an addendum to the 2030 General Plan Environmental Impact Report. Lori Temora, the Contract Planner, and Greg Stones?
Good evening.
Back up. Good evening.
Lori Temora, Contract Planner for the City of Lumpoke, here tonight to present the update to the safety element, and we'll go through the slides as soon as I get this started. So, tonight's meeting, we're going to go over a review of the 2030 General Plan Element, present the safety element update, have a City Council discussion and recommendation, and public comment and adoption of the resolution. Project overview, you've seen some of these slides before. The General Plan is a comprehensive roadmap for guiding future development. It addresses the city's physical development, locations, infrastructure. Updated the General Plan requires community engagement and is reviewed by state and local agencies. Each element of the General Plan can be amended up to four times a year. That was a clarification from the City Attorney's Office, so we're not jeopardizing additional review of other elements by bringing this particular element forward tonight. Next slide. So, right now, the City of Lumpoke has the following elements that are required by state law as listed on the left-hand side, and we do have optional elements that are, been adopted over the years. Currently, we're updating the safety element. Last year, there was the adoption of the housing element, which was certified by the state in January of 2025, and we also did the environmental justice element. Go ahead. All of the updates that we're doing right now, including the housing element, the safety element, circulation element, have been reviewed through an addendum to the original Environmental Impact Report, and was initially certified by the city as part of the housing element. Go ahead. The safety element was originally adopted back as part of the 2030 General Plan. The safety element update is triggered by a couple of different actions that either occur by the state or through the city action. One of those is, the safety element can be updated based on the climate change laws that were passed, and would be updated by 2022. Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was updated in October of 2022. And then you have the housing element update, which was adopted in November of 2024 and certified in '25. The city decided to move forward with the update through the housing element process so that they had one environmental document rather than a series of environmental documents over a period of time. So, we're bringing forth this safety element update in springboarding from the housing element update. Next slide. The safety element discusses a number of items, these are all part of the state law for the General Plan Updates, and so we'll go through some of these items. Next slide. Our team of consultants that worked on this project included Mendez Harnish, who has been involved with all of our updates. The Climate Action Vulnerability Assessment was done through RINCON Consultants, and they also did the update to the environmental document. DKS Associates is a traffic engineering firm that did our evacuation analysis, which again was part of the package that you had with this safety element. Some of the illustrations that are in our safety element include the flood maps. The blue is the floodway and the floodplain 100-year, and then the gold color is the 500-year floodplain that impacts part of the city through Megalita Canyon. Another map that's included is a recently adopted fire hazard map. This one was, will be added, has been added to the safety element in a timely manner as it was just released. And so, it reflects the edge of, the south edge of the city that has exposure to potential high fire hazard, as well as the areas that are adjacent to the Burton Mesa Chaperal Reserve, and include the Burton Ranch project. This map does reflect some of the same information, but it identifies some of the critical facilities throughout the city, including hospitals, schools, medical facilities, and also community facilities that are available if an emergency happens. Part of the process for updating the safety element is to include a review by CalFire and state review. And so, the original safety element was submitted to CalFire in March of '24. They provided comments, a second resubmital was provided in April, and then some additional comments came from CalFire, and then ultimately, we received an approval letter in August of '24. And so, we're moving that review of that document as well as some of the mitigation measures here today. Regional earthquake faults, there's just a couple that are along the south edge of the city. And again, this is part of the review that happens with building permits. If you're near an earthquake fault, there's additional standards that are applied to your building permits and grading permits. We've also been working with SB CAG and the Airport Land Use Commission to update the safety element and providing, within this document, the Airport Safety Compatibility Map. There's also an effort that the Planning Manager will bring forward here in the near future on some of the resubblings that will need to happen around the airport. Go ahead. So, just to give you an update on how this element went through public review, in March of this year, we circulated the document for a 30-day public review and then brought it forward to the Planning Commission on May 14th. There were a number of questions that were raised at that hearing, and I'm just going to go through a couple of them. And when we brought the project back in July, we had answers to some of their questions, so, next page. One of them was in regards to what the state Fire Marshal's requirements now are for secondary access or secondary full access for projects. The safety element identified three neighborhoods that are limited access, and so, the Planning Commission wanted to understand a little bit more about those neighborhoods, and so, we provided this illustration for them to review and discuss. In the future, we will be looking very closely at projects, making sure that they do have secondary access for emergency routes. Other questions came up as to where did all of the additional measures and action items that were added to the safety element, where did they come from? The original safety element had 39 measures. There were 17 new measures added, and those measures 14 through 22 were direct requirements of CalFire's comments to the document. And then we had additional elements that were tied to addressing climate change, whether it was for heat, for water, for changes to temperatures, those kind of things were part of the actions that were added for climate change. And then measure 44 was part of the Airport Land Use Plan. So, after we reviewed all of those measures, the Planning Commission understood what was being added to this safety element. Go ahead. The, during the July Planning Commission meeting, there was a discussion throughout the document, we went through a number of edits that occurred, and we had a long discussion about the goal four. And the recommendation by the Planning Commission was to delete two of the policies that talked about seismic vulnerability buildings and reinforcement, and trying to understand why they needed to have these two policies in the document, because the city already has zoning ordinances and building code requirements to address these two items. So, the Planning Commission took an action to delete policies 2.2 and 2.4 and rely on what's already existing in the building codes and in the state requirements for those buildings that are of seismic risk. And right now, based on the list that we have from the Building Department, there's four to five buildings in the downtown area that has... that has some exposure for vulnerability for earthquakes. So we're here today to answer any questions. We want to review the safety element update, open it to the public comments, and then adopt a resolution with the changes remedied by the planning commission and the staff. There is one item that staff is recommending. And that is in the element, we did add at figure S-1, which is the actual land use plan for the city. And that probably is more appropriate living in the land use element, not in the safety element. So we're going to work with the consultant to remove that figure. And we're asking for your direction tonight to allow that to occur. We're here for any questions and look forward to your action.
A quick question with the modification of San Luis Cia Canyon Road in being one of our main exit points. How does that affect our plan with what's going on, or rather, what's not going on with Caltrans other than blocking it off?
Oh, you're talking about San Luis Cia Road? The work that they're doing to avoid the left turns onto the highway, the alternative route is to take those that want to go north to Vandenberg, down to Constellation, and then make the U-turn back up the highway. And so at this point, it's not impacting the evacuation plan for the city because you have that route alternative.
It's just three miles longer because now you have to leave to go to Santa Maria. You gotta make a right turn, go to the village. Of course, we know that won't be clustered, right, if there's a panic mode, right? And then you gotta go through all that. And of course, everybody's gonna be leaving the village. And then you could, so anyhow, I think that...
I did attend the meeting that Caltrans presented to the public, probably back in March, I believe. And this is an interim solution. They're going to monitor it and maybe come up with some other alternatives for the circulation for that particular location.
Mr. Mayor Chief Martin. Said maybe 10 years, it might be something like that. I was at that meeting as well. And I did comment to them that it was potentially interfering with our safety element of our general plan. I don't know, maybe, maybe wouldn't, it'd be good to be proactive to get a letter written to Caltrans explaining this is a major complication for the people, at least getting it on record if we should have an issue. Heaven forbid that everybody's trying to exit that way and they can't get out. But at least maybe the city manager could write him a letter to say, hey, this was in our plan and you guys did this. What do you think about that? And maybe they can say, hey, it doesn't matter, or they can say, yeah, we got it on record.
Mr. Mayor Chief Martin. So the blockade that they're putting on that roadway is gonna be, in an emergency situation, we'll be able to drive over it. So basically, if we were gonna evacuate the city, we'd ensure that there would be a vehicle present there to allow people to use that exit and manage the traffic that way?
Yeah, they would have the white barricades. I just know my grandfather driving up to white barricades, not knowing that you go over the top of them, but freak out and stop right there, so.
That's why we...
Any point that does that. And I was at that meeting when they were referencing that.
We would put a unit out there so people knew that they could navigate it.
As long as we can get out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at. When they get anything that's on a block, door, block ingress, egress, I think it'd be good for a point of record that, especially since we have it in our plan, that is the main exit. But thank you, Chief Martin, for that as well. But I don't know if you want me to get a couple other people to go along with that, maybe at this time to make a request to get a letter to Caltrans to put it on the record that it would be part of our plan? We get a couple of nod heads, head nods? I get a head nod? So I got two other people to get a letter. I think it'd be important to put it on the record, especially since we're addressing it currently at this time, so. Any other questions? Councilmember Bridge?
That was a great presentation. It was a little quick for me. So I have a couple of questions about the presentation. Did I understand you correctly to say that each element that we're updating does not count towards our four revisions a year?
The first time that we bring an element to the city council counts. If we have additional hearings on that particular element, it does not count towards our four determinations for updating the elements.
So this does count as one?
This does count, yes.
Okay. Could you go back to the hazards chart? It was just too quick for me. I thought I saw in the plan discussions on a drought.
That's in the category of climate change.
Climate change.
Item C.
That answers my question. Could you go to the flood map?
I'm sorry?
Could you go to the flood map, please?
That's...
Can you help me understand McLaughlin's Crossing? Do you know McLaughlin's Crossing? Where people used to drive across the road and go to Mission Hills?
It's all the way out north, A Street.
Do you know where A Street is on this map?
Yes.
Can you, maybe use your little pointer or something? I'm trying to understand the interface along that section of the city where that floodplain is. I can't tell, but it looks like it's kind of like beyond Riverbend Park.
Yeah, I'm sorry, not...
McLaughlin Crossing is right where the Black Dog...
Do you know where Riverbend Park is?
Yeah.
Where is it on that map?
I think where...
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. It's not a trick question. I'm just trying to understand because there's a lot of discussion about what we can and cannot do in River Park. And that looks to me, and I could be wrong because I'm trying to interpret the map, that looks like Riverbend Park is in the same floodplain as the entire town. So I'm trying to understand if this is an accurate map, where Riverbend Park is on that app?
It's underwater.
Is it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the north side of that.
It's in the blue section?
Yeah.
You're sure about that?
It's where the dotted city limit line crosses the end of A Street when it arcs across on the gray road, where the Low Water Bridge used to always be.
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we could talk about that later, then just help me understand. They all are telling me it's correct the way it is, so I'm okay.
So there you go, you got your arrow. You got an arrow.
Oh, that's where...
McLaughlin Crossing is right there, where it's washed out a little bit to the left.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Could we see the earthquake chart, please? So is that saying, it's kind of hard for me to read, but is that saying it's one in 130,000 years? That's our quartet, or what does that, what does that mean exactly?
What do these things come in right here?
So each one of those are different kinds of faults being identified. And one of them is a, they also have when, the year that, the years that that fault may have occurred. So they've identified like a slip plane, a reverse fault. And they're estimating that that happened like 130 years ago.
130 or 135?
130,000 years ago. But it is identified as a geologic formation along that particular edge of the city as you go from one formation to another.
All right. Do you want to just have us ask questions on these charts? Or about what we're being asked to approve?
Go ahead, ask away. Time to ask.
I was trying to understand if the EIR is an addendum to the entire general plan? Or is it to the safety element that we're focused on?
So the original environmental impact report was done for the 2030 general plan. That environmental document was certified in 2010. Over the years, the city has used that environmental document for a number of changes to either the general plan or particular zoning designations throughout the city. This is actually the eighth amendment to that general plan. And it included the categories of housing element, safety element, circulation element, and environmental justice element were all included in this addendum. As I've noted previously, we're kind of stretching that EIR. It's now 15 years old and a number of addendums. But I will tell you that that EIR was a very thorough document. And I think it's credible and prudent to continue, at least in this actions, to use that environmental document and then address, add the addendum, which is additional review. SEQA and the laws have changed. So there was a discussion about vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gas, and wildfire were added categories in that addendum.
And greenhouse gases came under the climate hazard?
Correct, as well as traffic impacts.
And is the climate hazard a state mandated?
Yes.
Issue?
Yes. And that was not addressed in our previous safety element.
Okay, in your plan, you had, I'll just hold it up because I think you might recognize it. It's the assessment of the hazards versus the probability. You familiar with that? If, you have some that are in the high probability category. If they had been in the medium probability category, would it have changed significantly the, I guess it'd be the mitigation measures that you're proposing in this plan?
No, they would probably still be able to be developed. It would just be additional either sales reports, additional, you know, work with the building code. There's different tiers for projects based on the hazard probabilities. And so it doesn't necessarily preclude development for happening. It's just what standards are gonna be applied.
Okay. I guess I had some concern about the high probability of the drought. We went through a pretty significant drought. Lompoc didn't get impacted at all. We did implement all the state mandated requirements. But if you looked at our water table, it was, yeah, I guess you could measure it, but it wasn't much. So to have that be a high probability was a little surprising to me. And if it impacts people developing, then I have a concern on that. And then, okay. And the last concern, well, I had a couple more, I guess. It seemed like we didn't use, when there was a Vandenberg incident, we didn't use 246 as a escape route. Was that because of the bridge or what was the reasoning behind that, do you know?
I thought that in the DKS study, you're talking about the emergency evacuation routes?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to spend a moment looking at that.
Well, you could just take a note and come back. If that, if that was just a typo and it got left out by mistake, you could put it back. It's not impactful on approval this tonight. But I, it just seemed odd to me that if I had something going on at Vandenberg, a mishap, I wouldn't head to Beulton. And then...
If I may ask, what page were you referring to on that?
I was looking, you know, I did a cut and paste out of the plan, so I didn't have a whole, I apologize. But it is in the Table 1 Scenario Summary, Lompoc Evacuation Analysis. And it was the Vandenberg Space Force missile, or mishap, rather.
So I'm just looking at page eight of the evacuation scenarios in the DKS study. And it talks about different scenarios, one of them being a wildfire northeast of Lompoc. And they're recommending the evacuation go south to Santa Barbara. If there is any mishap at the base, they're recommending that we go south or to the west, I mean, to the east, rather than...
246 would be to the east.
Right, exactly.
It's not, it's not listed there.
And then if there's an earthquake in, again, because of the faults are on the south side, you would be going north.
Yeah, no, the only one I was concerned about is, and I'm not too concerned, but it says south to Santa Barbara, but I would, I would be very surprised everybody didn't just step on 246 and head for Beulton. It would be a safer route.
That's a very good catch. And I think we will talk to our consultant about making that change.
Measure eight. You use the word adequate peak water load. And I don't know what the word adequate means. And I could see that being used as a, we don't have enough water, you can't develop on the hillside. And so I just, I didn't see where that was defined. Maybe that's a standard term, and you'll tell me that.
So measure eight does note adequate peak load water supply. And I'm not gonna have the exact details. But in order to determine adequate peak load, you take, what is the load throughout the city? And I believe it's a 50% higher for peak load. If there was not only everybody using the water, but then you have a fire. So you need additional water source.
So is this is written, would that be grounds to stop development?
This is, when we're looking at developments within the city, particularly as, you know, we have a lot of potentially new development coming in, we're always going to be looking at our infrastructure and the capacity of that infrastructure and making sure that we have adequate water, storage, and also fire protection.
Is that a diplomatic yes?
Yes.
All right, my last question, you'd be glad to hear. There were several measures in here that, and this might be coming on my pet peeve. This thing, this general plan's been around for a bunch of years. I forget whether it's 20 or, and there are measures that are listed in here that say we've got more work to do. Like the city shall amend the subdivision ordinance. I mean, that's not new, that's been here for a long time. How do we address those? Are we saying we're gonna pick them all up now and get them done? They're kind of sprinkled throughout the general plan, too. So I'm just trying to, kind of trying to understand how this works. So we're just putting a plan together and then we'll come up back when we do the next one and list them again and say the work should be done?
It's not uncommon to have policy and action items that are prioritized. And updating the subdivision ordinance is not a high priority. I think that the directive of the update to the general plan, this go-around, is gonna be combing through all of these old policies and action items to be more efficient and actually say, what are we gonna do? And it may very well be that some of these things can be rolled into the update and we amend the ordinance at the same time.
Okay, well, it's really not related to this, but the other task we have on our plate is a 2050. And I'm gonna probably take the position that any one of these measures or mitigations... And I'm going to probably take the position that any one of these measures or mitigations that have been on the books for the last thirty years and not accomplished probably don't belong on the books at all. So, it was an excellent, you guys did an excellent job. I really had a lot of respect for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ball.
So, I just have a quick question, and I'm going to throw a big picture question out there based on one of your slides. There's a slide up there where you showed three neighborhoods that didn't have enough ingress egress. Do you mind pulling that one up real quick? And again, my short question on that, again, that is what it is, but does that come along with some, you said that planning commission is looking or planning is looking at possibly dealing with that? Does that mean state mandate that we adjust that or make additional ingress egress by a certain amount of time? Or how does that, is this just...
When these neighborhoods were planned and developed, the state law wasn't as mandated in regards to secondary access. These neighborhoods butt up against the south of the city, up into the slopes. And so, the connections are hard to make between the different neighborhoods. The one project on the right-hand side is a model home park. And it has a main access, but it also has a secondary gate where they store their RVs. So, if there was an emergency there, they could open up that gate. But it's not a daily use access. So, some of the people that live there might not know that they could go out that way. What the requirement now is, and I'm speaking for the fire department, is that accesses need to be daily use access to routes that people are used to using. So that, you know, it used to be you could do a main gate and an emergency connection somewhere. But people don't use it, they don't know where they're going. So, as projects come forward now, we're required to find alternative routes.
Sure. And again, I have no problem with that. I think, you know, worst-case scenario, everyone deserves a way to get out safely and quickly if necessary. The reason I brought that up is not because I have any stress about those three neighborhoods. We have to do what we have to do. But I'm, it makes me zoom out a little bit as a whole city, knowing that we don't have McLaughlin Crossing, we don't have a bridge that goes across Central that we imagined years ago. As a city as a whole, where do we land with other cities that have general ingress egress that might be slightly comparable? Are we sitting ducks at all, having only a couple of exits? Meaning, as a city, not as a neighborhood, are we impacted at all by that big picture? Because again, a worst-case scenario, we've got eight, ten thousand people, cars that need to leave. I'm just curious, has that come up in any of this discussion?
It did not come up in this analysis because it is an existing situation. There's only so many routes. And what the evaluation analysis did was look at the probability of certain event happening, which direction should they be directed to go out of. And so, yeah, it would be much better if there was additional routes. But where we locate it, we're dealing with what we have.
And again, I'm not putting any pressure on you guys. I was just highlighting that, you know, I hope that we figure out how to make sure everyone can get out of their neighborhood safely. But I still think long-term, you know, it's again, it's been a long-term discussion that if something really bad happens or we lose one bridge, you know, that type of thing, we're very limited on exits for our whole community. So, thanks.
So, glad you mentioned that. So, as for Measure Six in the book with McLaughlin Crossing, as it says in here, the city shall update comprehensive emergency management and recovery plan as required to reflect new information which affects the safety of Lompoc residents. In addition, the city shall investigate the need for an additional road crossing on the San Inez River in the event of major evacuation, which we've talked about it, we rumbled about it before, but let me make another motion that we get another letter to the county to find out what's going on with McLaughlin Crossing. I know Councilmember Starbuck had mentioned in the past, allegedly, there was a letter written some five or six years ago that said, hey, FEMA will pay for a new low water bridge every once in over ten years, but we're the county and we don't do low water bridges. And City of Lompoc, you can lead the way, and we'll let you lead the way. Because I think it's still in a number of general plans identified as well in there, the McLaughlin Crossing aspect. So, we kind of rumbled about it, but now that we're talking about it, and you mentioned as well, it's in here in Measure Six. So, why not do one of these things we're saying we're going to do? So, that, can I get two other people to support a letter going?
To the county?
To the county to see what's going on.
Yes.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes.
Councilmember Ball, okay, all right. Sorry about that, I just had to, with the segue from Councilmember Ball, I had to do that. Send it to the county general plan, correct? So, that would be nice, wouldn't it? Get here faster. Any other questions before we open this to public comment? Thank you, Laurie. And now, let's get public comment.
Yeah, going through this PowerPoint, I had some questions. And my name's Leanna Oliver, by the way, if you've not known me. Is the public able to get a copy of the PowerPoint that was just shown to us? Is one question.
Should be on the website, yes, correct.
Okay, the second question is about landmarks. As you can see, it was hard to figure out where we were in these different maps. And can we have like school sites or areas where we might have a large gathering of community members on the map, which I think would help? Because you never know when any of these things are going to happen. They could happen when school is going on or other things. So, it'd be nice to have landmarks. I lived through the 1969 flood of the City of Lompoc, and it was chaotic. I mean, things happened that nobody even expected would happen. And I know during that time, they had certain parts of the city scheduled, if the water got too high, to get to higher land. And I wondered if we had anything like that? Because floods can happen very quickly. Another question is people working in Santa Barbara. We have a big commuter traffic or commuters that go to Santa Barbara. If it happened during business hours, would we have, or look, what would that look like if there was an emergency? A lot of people live out of town, there were, and their families are from Lompoc. I would, if I was one of those commuters, I would be heading back to Lompoc any way I can to get to my family. How that's going to work? Has, another question is, did the city take a survey of how many of our first responders, critical support, live out of the city or in another county? I know that's a big problem in Santa Barbara City. Over fifty percent of those people that work in Santa Barbara live out of town. Now, I know it's very high rent of rent or living there, but that is a big concern about that. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Karen Hollenstein. I want to thank this council, every one of you and the mayor for being such good stewards of this issue of the McLaughlin Crossing, to bring it up. And also, I want you to know that when I delved into this and started talking about it on the dais a year or more ago, I did go to Hart's office and Limone's office over in Santa Maria and inquired about it. And all of the staff over there communicated a willingness to advocate for that. So, if you haven't already, you should contact their offices. Because they did all acknowledge the need and also the vision that I have when I explain, it's going to change our town. Thank you very much.
Anybody else to public comment? All right, goes public comment, bring it back to council. Question deliberations? Anybody got something to say? I know it's a lot to digest. Don't jump all at once. I've been to several meetings, I know it's been on the agenda...
Yeah, I just have one quick question. Is this actually a public comment on this plan? Is this a public session, whatever the right term is?
Yes.
Are you adding more public comments to this?
This is a formal public hearing on the safety...
Public hearing. So, will the public's concerns be included in the plan as at least comments?
They'll be included in the record of this...
Oh, there you are, I'm sorry. So, you're shaking your head yes?
We can't hear your head nod yes.
She was hiding behind that podium, I didn't...
I don't want to speak for the city attorney, but yes, this is part of the public record. And some of the suggestions that were made can be included in the action.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ball? Maybe I just did have one follow-up question. I appreciated the, a series of questions. One that stood out to me is the complication of our commuter population. I know that's, it is what it is. But we do have in excess of other neighboring cities. We have a lot of people that leave, leave their families at home. So, again, I don't know how that might be included, but that is a thoughtful piece of the dynamics of our city. So, curious about that, too.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Okay, well, I can go ahead and make the motion. We adopt Resolution 6771, Prince's Twenty-Five.
I'll second.
All right, go ahead and vote.
Thank you.
You passed five zero, Lauren. Good job. All right. Item number nine? Want to comment on item number nine? Anybody?
Mayor, item number nine staffers requesting that the city council simply vote to continue the item in the public hearing to October seventh.
And thank you guys for that one. I was just, you know, this was our three-day labor weekend. Thank you, guys, you know? Thanks for pulling that other three hundred pages from us.
I'll make a motion to continue item nine.
I'll second.
We do need to say the date, too, October seventh.
Oh, to continue it till October seventh? Is that what you said? Yes.
Okay, get a motion by Ball, second by Vega, go ahead and move it. Man, I got away with another one. Five zero again. All right. Down to council requests. Do we need to take a public comment on another one that we did? Were we okay without it?
No, we're good without it.
Okay, all right, we'll do more later, right? Okay. Number ten, awarded contract purchase order, the amount not to exceed one thirty-five to Lily Pet EV LLC for purchase of electric vehicle charging stations discussed with resolution number six 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 nine, Prince's Twenty-Four. And consideration to change in location of electrical vehicle charging installation funded by Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District, twenty twenty-three clean air grants for infrastructure program from one twenty-three North Eighth Street to Lompoc Valley Medical Center parking lot. Call you? Oh, Councilmember Starbuck?
I'm going to recuse from this item due to owning real property within five hundred...
You just know there's more tacos in there, don't you? Councilmember Ball, are you going to tacos, too? No? All right, just left it on, all right. Just here, all right, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mosby and council members in the Lompoc community. Thank you, guys, for all coming out tonight. Yeah, so, I'm here. This stems essentially from a council request to bring back Resolution number six 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 nine twenty-four. We had previously been awarded a grant from the Air Pollution Control District. It was the twenty twenty-three Clean Air Grants Program. We received an offer for a hundred eighty-seven thousand and had an anticipated cost of about five hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, that resolution had appropriated the funding, accepted the grant agreement, authorized us to go ahead and execute the agreement. We've been working on the project, and it sounds like there are other opportunities to look at also. So, we've been exploring that. We've gone down a pretty far path, as the staff report notes, for the one twenty-three North Eighth Street location. So, we're essentially ready to bid out for construction. We have this one purchase that we're recommending to approve, and then after that, it's ready to bid out. The other, so essentially, what this item is recommending is to approve the purchase for those EV chargers and then provide direction on whether we want to either reaffirm the resolution and move forward as the, you know, the plan is right now. We could, you guys can direct staff to explore modifications of the project. So, we have spoken with the Air Pollution Control District. They are flexible, so they're, and they're willing to assist us in whichever way that we choose. They had said that, and going down to item three, providing alternate direction to include the option of moving forward with the current project and also exploring another opportunity for the hospitals project. They did recommend that path as well. But we, I'm happy to kind of dive in or start wherever you guys are interested in this item.
You are on an extension, correct, on this already?
We are on an extension, so we have until the end of twenty twenty-seven.
Any other questions for Stephen? Councilmember Vega?
Stephen, the, as we can see here, the resolution to reaffirm one twenty, one two three North Eighth Street is still in place, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what our direction is? And then, the Valley Medical Group came up as a substitute or an alternative or a secondary location for the EV charging stations?
Yes, so, there's a grant opportunity open right now. We've been working closely through the past about week and a half since the last council meeting to try to scope something out that would be sufficient. So, we do have an idea of a grant. We've spoken to APCD. They've said, as long as you get something into us, you know, we can refine details. But we're getting pretty detailed right now. We're looking at, you know, the amount of chargers that the medical centers needing and what they're looking at, kind of scoping out. They have some changes on their end that they'd like to address also. We currently have an approved plan set, but I think that's going to change a little. So, we have some work to do definitely on that project. But the way I look at it from the electric utilities perspective, I think both of them will be net positive projects. I think enhancing more services are going to, it's going to help the electric utility and the ratepayers. So, that's kind of my thought on both.
It sounds like we're not too deep in the medical center direction now, because they already have EV chargers there. I'd be more of an advocate of providing those amenities to downtown where the mom and pops are actually looking to thrive in businesses, you know? We look for economic development, but it seems like if you use your eyes and you feel and you touch and you smell, people would probably get a little excited to see some improvements in that direction there. So, unless there's a funding mechanism that's different for one, two, twenty-three North Eighth Street versus the medical center, is there anything that's different, except that it's an altered location or somebody wants it over there?
Not really different. So, one consideration is the current grant. So, if we were to amend the current grant that we have, a hundred eighty-seven thousand, we could do that. We could push it to the medical center's location. We would be limiting ourselves because the Air Pollution Control District has expressed that they can't, they can't collaborate on grants. So, they can, and there's an up to two hundred fifty thousand dollar opportunity. And any, I'm assuming that the costs are going to be well over that. So, the medical center being a sensitive receptor, they get kind of bonuses. You can get up to eighty percent of the project cost, two hundred fifty thousand, for the current open grant application period. That doesn't have to do with the past one. So, if we wanted to move forward with partnering with the medical center and looking at installing some EV chargers, we could do that. That doesn't have to do with the past one, so if, if we wanted to move forward with, uh, with partnering with the medical center and looking at installing some E V chargers, we could do that. Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity, I mean.
Yeah, no, I, I like the opportunity for us to expand, but I also look at, uh, the downtown efforts and what we can do to help the local businesses and our economics. You know, we talk about economic vitality, uh, especially down South H Street, we have our Old Town Fair, we have the Theater Project, uh, Lompoc Record Building. We have a lot of things that could probably, uh, take advantage of the, the charging stations being nearby. As far as pedestrians and people that want, and especially with Flower Festival and things, so I hope we go that direction, but thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Bridge.
Um, I had a little difficulty hearing, uh, what you were saying about A P D C. Well, did you say, did I hear, um, you say that they're okay with either location?
Yes, they're okay with either.
Your initial staff report kind of indicated that there was some risk associated with getting that approved. That has changed?
No, I, I don't, I, I didn't write with intentional risk necessarily, I don't know, is there a specific?
Maybe I misread it.
Or, I, I mean.
But it, it matters not how I read it.
Yeah.
You're saying that A B D, the Air Pollution Control District, it's mocked next to them whether we put it downtown or by the hospital.
To them it's fine, to, so to us, I think that's where the real, um, consideration is, is we, we spent eighty thousand.
I thought I had read, and again, I might have misread it, that there was eighty K of risk that if they didn't approve it, but now you're saying that risk doesn't really exist.
Well, it, it doesn't, doesn't, we'd have to look at the, the scoping of the project. So because of where the, the, the medical center's project is and its, um, planning right now or in that, that phase, the, the more or less, you know, development. And going back to, to plan sets, um, they, you know, we're not really sure what electric infrastructure is needed right now. Um, so we, we've scoped out what has been approved, but there are going to be changes, um, to, to lessen the cost of the entire project. So there, we're not exactly sure what, what that project entails. Um, what I do know is we, we have spent eighty thousand dollars, um, they are carbon credit, um, proceeds also. So that does bring up another, you know, implication of whether we, how we would, you know, retract that, I'm, I'm not sure at this moment. And we, you know, we could be directed to, to look into that. I, I don't, I don't think that'd be the most viable option. I see, and, and where I recommended in, in the report is moving forward with both is the cleanest step forward, um, cleanest path forward. I think changing meddling with what we currently have going on or the, a project that's essentially shovel ready, um, is, that, that's really going to, i- i- it will have some time delays, um, it will cause a little bit of confusion and, you know, and just cleaning that up, but it can be done. Um, I, I, I believe, um, that's what I've been told by Air Pollution Control District. Yeah, and if, if we were to apply for another grant, I, I do see the benefit in more, uh, funding. So there, there's additional funding that we could potentially realize for that project and, uh, and move forward with both.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Ball.
So, uh, a couple of quick things, and maybe the city attorney can clarify a little bit. So, uh, the current one twenty three South H Street, that's a city owned?
Yes, so it was gifted to us in twenty twenty.
So we own that, we've, so we've got a deal with A C P D, whatever they call it, but we've got a grant, it's almost ready to go, but that's on city owned parking lot. Now, the medical center obviously needs parking, everyone needs to plug in, more E Vs than ever, but that's privately owned parking lot. To my understanding, the state does enforce or have some sort of, you talked about the scope of that project, doesn't the state insist that private, you know, build outs for new parking lots to some scale need to come up with their own money to install a certain amount of chargers? So has that been discussed? Are, you know, we can't necessarily fill that gap for a private industry, but maybe we could supplement. Is there any clarity on any of that part of this?
I, I'm actually awaiting clarity from Air Pollution Control District. So I, I did, um, float the question about how that, you know, requirements for local state and federal regulations come into play with this. Um, that, that is one of the guidelines, is that the, the funding can't be used for a requirement from one of those, from, from a, Paul, there are, you know, a local code or a, you know, state, you know, code, anything. I mean, this is really from the California Green Building Standards, so, um, you kind of have to work in, in surplus. That being said, there, there, it's kind of a tiered structure, so however many parkings station, or parking spaces, calls for X amount of E V ready with E V chargers in it, and then it calls for more with, you know, E V stubs ready for future build out. So there, there's kind of a, um, where, like I said, we're not too sure because we don't know how many parking spaces there will end up being, um, what the electric requirements are. So I, I just know that we, we may have some limiting factors, um, that doesn't detract from the, the entire project cost. So A P C D has instructed us to apply regardless, and we'll see where, you know, they'll, they'll do the math for us, so.
Sure. And then, uh, thank you for that. My second thing, just kind of following up with, uh, Councilmember Vega, when this initial discussion had happened, I think the intent, at least from my understanding, and I still believe strongly in it, that having those chargers downtown is part of a strategy to get those who, um, may be traveling through town and maybe are tourists. And normally they'd stop somewhere else, but now they look on their app and there's a charger downtown Lompoc, uh, the hopeless to get them to plug in. Sure, spend a little bit of money on electricity, but maybe walk to some of our shops, get some coffee, buy an instrument at the music shop, go to the garden shop, learn a little bit more about Lompoc. And spend money and actually benefit our tax, our sales tax base. I don't personally have any issue against where the chargers are, but I, I would just caution us that if the intent is to have this big picture overview of economic growth in downtown, if our main charging option for out of towners to charge their electric vehicles across the street from the hospital, no offense, everyone needs to plug in, but you're, you're limited to options, uh, and I've eaten at the cafeteria, it's delicious. But your other option is Circle K for lunch. And I, no offense against them either, but you hear where I'm coming from.
Yes.
Uh, for me, it's a no brainer, uh, I teach at Hancock, they had a lot of electric chargers that were empty last semester, no one using them, haha, laughed at myself. I bought an electric car, that's a good idea, I go there to plug in, there's no empty spaces, I have to get on a waiting list now. So in the course of one semester, there are more and more people that need to plug in. So again, out of towners are always looking for a gas station. People with E Vs and that per capita for E V users in California is going through the roof right now. And again, my whole hope was that we would attract additional spending from out of town dollars considering the location of those chargers. So for me, I would personally hate to jeopardize that. I'd also hate to jeopardize it, uh, and give you guys a bunch of direction to change canoes and then find out that the scope or what they're planning there, we can't necessarily use those monies because we would be, we need to supplement instead of just being the, the sole provider of those chargers. So at least for me personally, I still think it makes sense, uh, where they're at. I think we need chargers everywhere, so again, as additional opportunities come up to supplement and to help, I think that's important too. But for me, um, I'm still stuck at one twenty three Sou- or North H, I think that's a great spot for, for this investment personally.
Thank you, ma'am. I guess there might have been a question in there, but you started deliberating already. Let me, let me fill in where, where this came a little bit from and the reason why I made this request. And not opposed to charging stations down there, it's just a time constraint that was needed for something else. The, the hospital is looking at putting, uh, an expanded parking lot which they desperately need. And which triggers a multi hundred thousand dollar investment on top for charging stations, which becomes a deal killer. We know we've been to Home Depot and a lot of the hospitals parking in Home Depot, we'd like to see them build their parking lot. To help expedite the hospital with building this, not against charging stations downtown, which we could get a grant again in the future to expedite a project in the city of Lompoc. And we know probably one of the largest employers in town is the hospital, and the parking lot is probably one of the busiest in town is the hospital. And an area that's probably in the need of the greatest point for these charging stations now is the hospital. And to help expedite a situation there, not opposed to filing for a grant to do more there, this was trying to work together. We always talk about working with the hospital and the school district, well, this opportunity came up. I was approached the hospital with a parking situation they had, I was approached by Home Depot with a parking situation they were having. And it's like the hospital's like, hey, we're trying to build this parking lot, but seventy seven parking places were going to cost two million dollars with these E V stations. It's like, well, let's try to work together, we have a grant, we could maybe work with it here, talking with A P C D, it's like, hey, maybe we can jog you around. We can help expedite something we definitely know, I think there's five, six, seven hundred employees down at the hospital. And we know there are tens of thousands of visits, probably the busiest parking lot in town is at the hospital. Not saying that we don't keep moving forward or putting charging down there, this was something to help expedite a parking lot for the hospital. And we know that with what's going on with Sin Cal and you've heard the horror stories and, and the battle that they're having at the hospital with funding and stuff in certain areas, this would help sweeten it a little bit to help them with the project. It might be delayed for multiple, multiple years if we didn't step up, so. I know I deliberated a little bit there, but I was also trying to fill in a little bit of why we got where we are and why I made the motion that I did make. But it's not against bringing them in downtown, but it's to help in a situation of a time constraint and a financial constraint to help partner with the hospital, we always say we want to partner with everybody, this would be a great opportunity. Again, Stephen did a great job with what we have, not opposed to going out and, and did talk with the head of, uh, A P C D in, in lining up more grants in the future, this was to help expedite and kill multiple birds with one stone. So that's kind of where we're at anyhow. Councilor Ball, you have something to respond to that?
So, and I, uh, with all respect, I, I just, I guess I politely disagree. I, I look, I'm not against, yeah, I know there's impact issues, parking, look, we all see that. I guess for me, it's a, to me, it's, we've already gone so far down the path that we're going to rip something down to help supplement, uh, a parking issue. And again, I, I hear that, um, but I think that's, I'll put it this way. I have people that bug me all the time about stuff that's on their mind in this community. I have gotten people that reached out and said, hey, what are we going to do about chargers? So I've said, well, we've got some chargers coming, I've not heard one person, I've not got one email. And again, no offense against the needs for the parking lot, I get that, and Home Depot's impacted, but I haven't got one person or had one person say to me, what are you, how, what can you guys do to help build a parking lot for the hospital? So for me, I guess I need some clarity, are we saying unless we, uh, kind of go backwards on a decision that I thought was somewhat binding and direction and costs that have already been, um, bills that are starting to add up for this build out, that the only way that the hospital can get this parking lot and solve Home Depot parking issues and, is for us to do this? I don't know, for me, I, I, I'd love to hear from the community about that, I haven't yet, so.
Let me go back to Councilmember Bridge.
Stephen, uh, did you develop the grant that we submitted or did somebody else in the staff develop the grant?
Uh, back in twenty twenty three, so that was, um, under direction of Dean, our, our city manager. But we, um, we did put together a grant, I mean, it's, there's a lot of difference.
Dean, did, did the grant have a component in it that, um, justified getting the credit, uh, for reduction of greenhouse gases?
Well, that, I, I can speak to that, yeah, so, so the cap and trade program or the G H G allowances that, that does, it, it's in the, um, the code or section where, you know, what dictates what you can use the, the allowance proceeds for. It, it's in there that electric vehicle charging, um, it's a common use with the cap and trade, uh, proceeds, so that's a.
So we have funds, um, that we could tap for greenhouse gas emissions reductions. We gave away about three million dollars of it back to the citizens, um, recently, um, but we still have a significant amount of money in there. Is, is this have to be an either or?
No.
Is there any reason why we could not put together a program that said, uh, we will move forward with the plan that we have and we'll use our carbon credits and we'll use this grant that we have for the hospital? Um, is there any reason we can't do both?
No, there, there's no reason, um, we, we actually, the, the reauthorization of the cap and trade program has started to float, or act the legislation for it. Um, the, the assembly has put together a pretty robust, um, reauthorization bill that hopefully will hit the, the governor's desk by the, the September deadline. I know it's like a week, couple of weeks or something like that, but.
I'd like to suggest that, that we bring this back, but I'd like some ho- input from the hospital as to really what the goodness of this is. Not that I in any way distrust the mayor who's not done the rock groundwork, but I'd like them to come and saying, hey, yeah, we'd like to partner, we'd like to.
They're here in the audience, as soon as we get a chance, we'll.
Okay, well, I apologize, I'll wait.
I, I would say too, like, you know, in this case, it'd be a public, public partnership, but public, private partnerships and that sort. We're, we're an electric utility, we're publicly owned electric utility, we can offer charging at twenty cents per kilowatt hour. You don't see, you see double, triple that in the Bay Area or other areas in, in investor owned utility territories.
I'm just suggesting we come back with a creative solution and turn this into a win win, because I, I want to support the hospital, they need parking. I have had many people complain to me about the parking at the hospital.
So.
I haven't heard from Home Depot, but, uh, if there's some way to facilitate economic growth downtown, I'm for that as well, so. Let's see if we can make this a win win.
I'll make this super easy, I, I, again, for clarity, I have no issues against the, the, the hospital's needs and their issues and the impacts. I think for me, it's like, again, why does it have to be, we got to rip something that was a good idea over here to like, you know, make. So yes, if there are funds and we can be creative and we can do both, yes, 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 hundred percent.
What do you guys say we open up the public comment before you keep deliberating before we get a public comment? What do you say?
I, I would recommend, um, moving on this hastily, uh, the, the application for the current, uh, program ends on the fifth. So this Friday, we, that's why we've done a bit of research, um, through the last week and a half or so since the last council meeting. So we, we wanted to be prepared to, to try to solicit those funds, but, thank you.
Can, can I take public comment, you might as, you have something else to say right now?
I, I think I'd like to say something.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Vega.
Thanks, you know, uh, just to remind everybody, there's no reason we can't make it all work at the same time. One of the alternate directions here is regardless of who you want to go in first, that we can make both of these things happen and we find the money. So basically, we could move forward with the one twenty three North H Street and simultaneously, simultaneously, uh, get the future funding without waiting for the future, as was stated, you know, because Lompoc's always waiting for the future, a future of what? You know, we can maybe do things hand in hand and make these, uh, work, you know, together. So that's basically what I wanted to remind, that there is an alternate direction here to make both things happen.
All right, let me open up the public comment so we can get some of the questions answered maybe.
Hello, my name's Yvette, Yvette Cope, I'm the CEO of Lompoc Valley Medical Center, um, can you hear?
Can we look, there's a button on that, you can lower that down, somewhere.
Oh, thank you. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, uh, and I did not prepare a statement tonight, I knew that this was, um, happening, but I do want to make sure, uh, that I really get the point across, thank you, Mayor Mosby, for all the words that you just said. I've been, um, meeting with so many, um, different leaders in our community since I took over as CEO a year ago. And, um, meeting Mayor Mosby and just going over the challenges that our hospitals has, and one of them is our parking. We've been wait, waiting, we've been planning for about two years now on our seventy seven, um, parking spots. And early on, the whole project was going to be maybe about a million dollars, but then getting into the trans, trans, um, my maintenance guy is here as well, Director of Maintenance, um, but getting a transformer, getting these, uh, E V parking spots, it's now two point one million dollars. And with all of the potential Medicaid cuts that are out there with, um, we're looking at fourteen million dollars annually losing just in supplemental cuts. So everything we can do in our organization, we're doing to cut, excuse me, cut costs, um, anywhere we possibly can, and when you think about parking, that's the first thing that goes, is two million dollars. We need that two million dollars to build the village project, um, that's, you know, in the works right now, that hopefully we have open in twenty twenty six. And that will open access for all of our community members, um, so any help whatsoever, partnering, I don't want to. So any help whatsoever, partnering, I don't want to rip the Band-Aid off of any other project either. Do not want to step on anybody's toes. We just really need some support and partnering if there's anything that you can do to help get parking for our staff and for especially our visitors, our patients and our visitors. We have old ladies and gentlemen walking in, you know, from the street in a walker to get to their appointment, and it's it's getting out of control. Any help, support, again, do not want to rip the Band-Aid off of anything, so this all happened pretty quickly. So anything you can do to help us, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, back to the council. So again, we're not, even the plans that you do have in the future, the whole reason was to try to help work with the hospital in this time, maybe expedite it over there. You've had a grant for a number of years here and actually had an extension because it was kind of going really slow over there. And if we can help in this situation, plus continue to apply for grants and other things. The thing, because Stephen had done such a great job in putting this together, was like, these guys are in need. Here's an opportunity with something here. We can assist and expedite this and then come along on the other one, because it doesn't seem like it's a rush order. If you go by the hospital, you're out of town, but if you go by, well, you were there not too long ago, but it's pretty busy. It's very busy, the hospital, and it is difficult. And what I'm asking to do, again, not the medical thing of tearing a Band-Aid off, I thought that was interesting, but we're not, we're not tearing the Band-Aid off of this. The plan that he still has can be put to use in the future as well. Even if we do go to the other location, to come back and do that. I'm not saying not do that. What I'm saying is opportunity we have right now and the need by a fellow partner in the city. You know, that's all I'm looking at right now is to move forward with this. And it might not all line up. I'm just trying to open up the opportunity that if it would line up, that it could go to the hospital in this, at this time. Again, if there could be a hiccup down there that it doesn't work out, but we're just trying to and there was some leniency with Aaron at APCD and willingness to work with us and enhance potentially, they're gonna, I believe you guys are still filing for more grant opportunities? Because this was only ten spaces. They need seventeen charging spaces. And the city did partner with the other unit that's there that has four units on it right now, so it's not like we hadn't done it before.
But I do think, just to weigh in, I do think the timeline, because they have to go back to revisiting the plans, trying to cut costs a little more on the project. It would essentially align up. I mean, we'll apply by the end of this Friday. We'll have a grant offer typically around early December, late November. It's kind of after the Thanksgiving, maybe, but before Christmas, we'll know. We would bring it back for a grant agreement. And then at that time, too, have a more or less like an MOA. We do have an MOA with the medical center currently for the beam stations that are out there. But looking at who pays for what, because the beam stations were different. That was more to kind of get a demand signal from the community, put something out there, utilize the grant funding. And there were no infrastructure costs, so to speak. Now there's infrastructure costs. There have been EV charger projects that have not come to fruition because of costs that we've, you know, we've provided or deposits that they needed to put in for electric infrastructure. So I do think that that's gonna take some time, definitely, to see what that partnership looks like and whether it's the same as a private entity or, you know, other public entities. I think that's, it's definitely something I would consider, but like I said, the grant applications opened this week. If not, I mean, if we were to switch it, the way I see it playing out is we would apply what the plan said that we have for another grant and then move, you know, kind of replace one for one, which might not it just might not make sense. I mean, even with their project costs, it's about, you can get up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I just think it's a bigger bang for your buck also with that.
All right, thank you, Stephen. The, in talking with the APCD as well, in understanding that the parking lot we were looking at, putting it on H Street, are currently looking at and their objective is to get as much activity on it as they can. I think the hospital parking lot would meet that objective as well. Not saying that we wouldn't move on. APCD has continually has the grants that are coming forward with this as well, but anyhow, that's in the table, so is it Councilmember Bridge?
I'm actually getting a little confused now, which is becoming common in these meetings. I'm hearing two or three options on the table here. And not to put words on anybody's mouth. I feel or kind of interpreted what the mayor is saying is let's use the grant that we've got now for the hospital. And what I'm hearing you say, Stephen, is no, let's use the grant we have now for H Street. And I'm putting another grant in on Friday, and we'll target the hospital for that grant. And then I have the unknown of when the hospital is really gonna have the funds to do the parking lots. That's another factor that's kind of confusing me. I don't know, maybe you guys have a better handle on it, but that's what I'm hearing is is that what we're facing is a decision like that?
What I was looking at was the grant that we currently have now redirecting towards the hospital. So the hospital could actually put electrification in other areas on existing parking lot in itself. The grant isn't, from the way I read everything, it doesn't have to be in the new parking lot. And it would make sense if you're doing a handicap charging station, you want to be in a current handicap place, not across the street. So it would be up to them to be creative with this, but allowing us the leniency to transfer towards them. And then staff working with the hospital as well, potentially to help them to get more to finalize, because this is only ten parking places. They need seventeen.
So a piece of what I heard on the hospital is that when they put in a new parking lot by state Band-Aid, because we're all gonna be driving electric, they have to have so many electric slots. And I thought the suggestion was that these would meet a portion of those, but is that true if we put them in a different location than the new parking lot?
If we put the chargers in the hospitals?
What I just heard, again, on
On the hospital's lot.
If the hospital puts those parking meters or
I believe they will, I believe they will qualify, correct?
That will qualify as the ones for the new parking lot.
I believe so.
Okay. All right, I'm just trying to get the whole
I got you. Councilmember Ball, then I'll go to you, Councilmember Vega, okay?
I guess from my perspective, I still feel strongly that there's a need for us to build towards the future for economic development downtown. I don't think anyone argues with that. I understand the timing. I get all of those things. I guess my only concern would be is we are stepping up to potentially partner with a certain amount of money. That doesn't mean they finalize the cost. They've still got to figure their build out, get permits, lots of other things. So what I'd hate to see happen is, well, they made a fiduciary decision not to move forward as quickly on the parking lot because of some other circumstances. And here we have redirected something that had good intentions for downtown, and it becomes a holding pattern worst-case scenario for the hospital side of things, so again, it's in the, you mentioned it, it's in the report. The third option is pretty clear, provide alternate direction, including the option to proceed with both and simultaneously pursue, so I guess the timing thing, timing is of the essence, but I don't have enough clarity from the hospital that, you know, they raised the one point three or one point five or one point seven five that they need, and if they can get their permits in, this will be done by when? Those are still a little bit of a moving target for me. So if there's a grant that you're gonna be reaching out by this Friday, why do we have to go and shut one down and move the money that way if there's opportunity to do both simultaneously? I guess that's where I'm confused, so.
That would essentially be my recommendation. I think the timelines add up. Yeah, I mean, it just, it muddies up the entire process, but like I've said, APCD is happy to work with us. We're happy to work, you know, we actually we, us and the city and the medical center work very well together, so. We've been, we met earlier this week. We've been, or actually last week, we've been in constant contact throughout the day, and we're scoping something out, so I think regardless, we can achieve both, both objectives.
Councilmember Vega? And, you know, I want to be respectful to everyone. The hospital is just, is really important to this city. Downtown vitality is very important. I just, I think that the future is here now. Without a parking lot in place, we have the other one in place, and I think we can do both and make everyone happy, pursue the funding opportunities here. This alternative direction would be something I would be leaning toward, which basically said, let's do what we can now, and let's get the funding together to help the hospital out in secondary position. But still, it could be really close together. By that time, the parking lot and everything's together, and then we're we're kind of helping both entities. I think that's the direction that we should go in, because the future is now here for Long Poak. Downtown, there's so much money being spent. Maybe it's kind of invisible, but you're seeing the progress on H and Ocean. You're seeing the vitality that the South Side needs for their business activity. There's people here that are waiting for growth. There are new developments here that are coming in. So it'd be nice to drive some of the development and the the economics to the local businesses for the people that have been starving out for so long. I think they would appreciate some sort of improvement that you can see, feel, touch, and smell. So we need to provide that for our people. So I think we can help both entities at the same time with the alternative direction. I'm not sure if we're there for a motion yet, but I wish somebody would make a motion here.
Look, let me, let me try something then for you, but it's gonna be putting the hospital just a little bit ahead of
Well, I think we should put the hospital in secondary because we don't have a parking lot. Why would you put something there that doesn't have a parking lot?
Because they do have a, it could go in the existing parking lot.
I think someone is so sad on having it done, they're
Well, I've spent a little time investigating it. That's why I was looking at, so we do move towards the hospital aspect and also pursuing future funding for, so basically, turning the I guess it would be your recommendation alternate.
Alternate to
But I would flip the positioning, and that is the use the existing for the hospital, but simultaneously pursue future funding for the one twenty-three. You following?
Yep, definitely.
That's the motion I'm looking at, maybe.
And just to, for the record also, number one, approve a contract purchase order for the chargers.
Correct.
It's actually five, not four. That's a typo. There's four Level Two chargers that we were planning to install, and then one Level Three DC fast charger.
Okay.
And like I stated, we can
So it'd be that with the other recommendations. So that'd be my motion.
I just want to repeat what the motion is in my mind, so I'm clear. Your motion is to move forward with the grant, but apply it to the hospital and then apply another grant for the H Street.
Correct. All right, does somebody else want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we provide the alternate direction, including the option to proceed with the existing one twenty-three North H Street project and simultaneously pursue future funding opportunities to add EV chargers at the Long Poak Valley Medical Center location.
So I'd definitely love to support that, but maybe you should bring in a little bit of both here. Would you consider, again, that's a little bit vague for me. So is there any, because there was the mention of the use for some of the greenhouse gas funds. Can we get, instead of just saying, come up, can we get clarity like, hey, can we ASAP, can we tap into any of those funds so that again, we can do these projects simultaneously?
City staff could come back. We could amend that to find out what the funding opportunities for greenhouse gases to help both projects move forward, if possible, simultaneously. I think that would be part of the motion. Is that what you're asking?
I think ultimately, that's a best-case scenario, but again, if there's an argument for a timing thing, I'm just not feeling it right now.
There it is. All right, we got a First by Vega, Second by Ball. Did that also include the recommendation by council to approve the contract purchase order? Make it. Did I approve your recommendation to approve a contract purchase order?
Yes.
All right, go ahead and vote. All right, and that passes for zero with one. I'll have tacos somewhere. Somebody wake Dirk up out in the parking lot.
Welcome back. Back to the item number eleven, adoption of the updated city council handbook.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This item is an update to the city council handbook. Councilmember Bridge provided some proposed additions and revisions to the city council handbook a few, several meetings ago. Staff has included those red lines attached to the staff report with some revisions made by staff that we recommend would be included if the council were to adopt this revision to the handbook. Additionally, there was a state law adopted a few years ago that regulates city council use of social media and whether you can and how you can respond to each other's posts on social media. So I added, my office added a section to the handbook about that state law. And there was one. I'm just gonna very, very quickly summarize what the additions to the handbook are. We added the Long Poak Community Benefit Foundation to the list of other bodies that the city participates in. That's on page four of the red line. On page seven of the red line, Councilmember Bridge added a sentence about city council use of the council chamber. As long as it does not conflict with other normal city council and commission meetings. That's in the handbook or added to the handbook on page number eight. Councilmember Bridge added some additional verbiage and refinement about city council's ability to request information from lower-level staff members other than the city manager. On page number twelve is where that social media law summary was added. Page number twenty-three, there was a section of the handbook that said the city shall aggressively enforce, no, it's not twenty-three. It's page number thirty-two. Got it backwards. Page number thirty-two, there was a section that said the city shall aggressively enforce state statutes and city ordinances regarding the abatement of graffiti. I think Councilmember Bridge thought that it was a little odd for that, the specific ordinance to be listed in the staff, in the city council handbook, and I tend to agree with that. So that was deleted. And then the final one is on page thirteen. And then the final one is on page 13, and this is the one where the city staff had some, um, pushback or some comment on what the proposal from councilmember Bridge was. And that has to do with when the agenda packet for city council meetings is published and is posted to the website and distributed to city council. It's on page 13. Councilmember Bridge proposed that if there are any staff reports that are not ready by the Wednesday before the council meeting, that that item should be automatically, that agenda item should be automatically postponed to the following city council meeting, and that the agenda would get posted on that Wednesday with all the items that are ready by Wednesday. I added a qualifier on the end to say, unless we have to keep that one council meeting date to meet an external deadline, like a state law deadline or something like that, then we would be able to publish the packet later than Wednesday. But otherwise, anything that, any staff report that was not ready by the Wednesday before the council meeting would get automatically pushed to the following council meeting, so that the packet could go out on Wednesday. And that would be a requirement in the city council handbook. Staff had some concerns about making that a requirement, and I can let city manager or city clerk speak more to that with more detail if they would like. But my sense is that it would result in maybe staff trying to get their staff report in by Wednesday, and then if there are, maybe it's not completely complete, or some changes might be needed, and then that would result in a revised staff report being issued on Thursday or Friday, or revised agenda being issued on Thursday or Friday before the Tuesday council meeting. And just to avoid that kind of, um, back and forth or revisions to the agenda, or revisions to staff reports that might confuse the public, I think staff is recommending that instead of making it an absolute requirement that the item be, that the packet go out on Wednesday, that it can be a goal, and that the city council handbook could say that the staff will take every effort and endeavor that the agenda packet will go out on the Wednesday before the council meeting. So, um, I hope I've encapsulated or summarized what the concern was there by the.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question? What, what is the goal today in the handbook?
I think the goal today is still the Wednesday before.
Is it the Wednesday, or is it a week before?
I think it's the Wednesday before, yeah, it's the Wednesday.
So it's been a goal all along?
Yes. So those are the revisions, uh, to the council handbook that are before you, and that concludes the staff report, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions, Councilor Ball?
No, I was just gonna say, um, you know, maybe there's a moving target where, again, I, I hear you on the Wednesday thing, but I'd hate to like get a bunch of stuff on Wednesday, start to do my homework, and then get a bunch of revisions, and they send me a bunch of updates, and I gotta make sense of what does it mean, and what's the implications on that. That said, uh, the more time we have to look over some of this stuff, the better. Can we get one, can we get one more day? Can we get it to Thursday or something that staff can actually commit to? Or is this just kind of a, you know, a goal that we maintain?
I, I, you know, I'm sensitive to workloads. That's a two-way street. The goal, as long as we've been here, is it will be, I thought it was a week, but we'll say it's Wednesday. It is very rare that you don't get it to close the business Friday. That means we can give up our weekends, try to be conscientious. Some of us work, so Monday's kind of shot. So that means I give up Saturday and Sunday because we can't make the goal. I'm not suggesting that we don't do the item. I'm just saying if we can't make the goal, move it out two weeks. Now I'll have two weeks to read it, because if you were gonna make it Friday anyway, now it's gonna be fully prepared and ready to go anytime. So I hate to be a dick, but man, just getting stuff on Friday afternoon to read this document over the weekend is just not a, it's not a fair way to treat us.
Councilor Ball?
Just a, and I certainly respect all of that. I think, a question for me, maybe you know, or someone knows. How are they doing it in other cities? Are we way behind? Does everyone else get a week or two days? Is that?
My experience is that the packets usually go out on the Thursday or Friday before the council.
So is that relatively traditional throughout cities, most cities, average cities, California?
Every city that I've ever worked in in 18 years of my career, um, it's gone out the Thursday or the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. And that's not to say that that's convenient for council members. I agree that's not convenient for council members, but that is kind of the standard.
I, I, I definitely hear where you're coming from, but maybe there's a sweet spot in the middle for progress versus just like hard line or a goal, and nothing happens either way, so.
I, I would guess that this goal has been in this handbook for years. I doubt it just showed up because I made a comment on it. So what's your history? When's the last time you got it on Wednesday? When we have a three-week break, you kind of get it early? Half the time, the staff presentations aren't even in there. They, they, they show up here. That last one we had on, uh, Robert Crosses. I mean, I had to read a book here, try to read it while it's being presented. I, I just think it's not the correct way to do business.
I do have one fear that we risk, and again, I hear you, but do we risk some sort of domino effect where staff freezes up? They can't hit that deadline, and we just turn it into like, well, couldn't get it done, so we keep pushing and pushing and pushing. If it just turns into a system of kick in the can for two weeks on a regular basis, I'm not sure we've made a lot of progress, except for maybe reading a little bit more, but, yeah.
Well, I would hope the city manager was able to manage that problem.
Any other questions?
I, I got a question on the use of the chambers. So the statement in here and such, I mean, we were allowed to use them before, sent to pay. So I don't know, is that, would consider it a gift if somebody's using the chambers?
Uh, no, if you're, if you want to use the chamber for personal use, then you can do that, just like.
Personal use or personal political?
I don't think it'd be appropriate to use it for a political campaign.
So personal, you mean a birthday party? Badge pinning, wedding ceremony, what?
There is a rule in here that says use of the council, council chamber is reserved for the city council, agency board, government agencies, council advisory bodies, and entities with contractual relationships with the city. So it would have to be one of those things.
Okay. I mean, I, I used it before, but I had to pay $175 to use it to promote the, the tax measure component, which I willingly paid, but I don't know what, other people, I get to use it, are they, are they paying? Other agencies that come in, or are they using it for free?
I don't know the answer to that.
Don't know that one? Okay. Anybody else have any other questions for city attorney? And what I meant political purpose is like a forum, a discussion, not a campaigning aspect, but.
The city clerk is telling me that other organizations do pay when they use the.
What's that?
The city clerk is telling me that other organizations do pay when they use the.
Oh, I was told I was the first one. They didn't have a scale. They didn't know how much to charge, because nobody else had been charged before, so. It's good to hear. Yeah, I guess, huh? All right, let's open that up to public comment. Public comment on this fine item. See, nobody rises. Close public comments, bring it back to council. What do you guys think? What do you want to do? What do you like? Councilor Vega, you got any comment on this one? No, I don't. Okay. Councilor Bridge?
I'll make a motion that we accept the update to the plan, including, uh, city comments and, uh, improvements.
The, the green highlights, the pink highlights, the blue highlights, or which ones?
I accept them all, except changing the Wednesday.
Except changing the Wednesday?
Yeah, the Wednesdays, uh, my motion includes that they've got to be done by Wednesday. This is two days. That's all. It's pulling it back.
So Wednesday is a requirement for posting?
Say again?
Wednesday is a requirement for posting the agenda?
No, you can post on Friday, just everything's got to be there for Wednesday. I don't really care when it's posted. You've got a 72-hour deadline. I care, I'm trying to communicate in this document that the material we're being asked to review is complete and ready on the website or to your Dropbox by Wednesday. I'm not trying to.
That, that would be posting, so if, if an agenda item is provided to the entire council, it needs to be provided to the public and posted on the website.
Okay.
So the requirement is Wednesday?
Yes.
End of day.
Yes.
And if an item is not provided, then it is pushed to the next or some other meeting, not, uh.
The, the suggestion?
Not a revised agenda, not an addendum to the agenda, but pushed.
Pushed to the next meeting, that's the whole point. Jeff added the words, unless it's a timely event or something to that effect, and I can live with that. But for a regular agenda item, I think the council should be allocated more time than their weekend to study the topic. And we are not talking about, you know, a small amount, these are books we're being asked to read, and I think it's only fair that we have a couple of these to do it. So yes, that's my motion.
Anyone, there's a motion, or any more, a second motion?
It, it went away. You'll have to redo it.
You got a question, Councilor Ball, for clarification of the motion, or what do you got?
Just quick clarification, so, you know, I definitely hear you, but so if an item doesn't make it by the Wednesday, we're not gonna see it, we're not gonna get any sort of partial staff report, it'll just get pushed, and then we'll get eyes on hopefully the following Wednesday. And then from that Wednesday to the council meeting, we'll get that one or two extra days. But we're not gonna have that two weeks of written staff report and getting information.
I, I can't speak to the rules because we have been given stuff in advance before, so I don't know what the rule is on that. Uh, all I'm really concerned is that I have at least two regular workdays to review a document.
Councilmember Vega, you have to redo your second?
Okay, you got a motion by Bridge and a second by Vega. Let's go ahead and vote. That passes four to one, Councilmember Ball voting no. All right. Any written communications?
Yes, we received 26 separate emails regarding Charlotte's Web Bookmobile. It was provided to council, to staff, posted on the website, and provided outside for the public.
Good. Uh, right before all communications, so what we got is the battery. Rick? Item four.
Evening.
Mr. Luther?
Yes, sir.
Fire away, tell us what you learned. We had a few questions the last time. I know you gave a page. One of the complications we had, the page you gave us, on this one column is blacked out. So I'm not sure what's behind the black. I can see there's some numbers, but I don't know why it's black. It's right on mine, I don't know. You got, oh, you got color. We could, we're in the lower end district.
So that's the, uh, it's basically, uh, the net cost for the year for the facility. That's the facility cost column. So over the 20-year life of the lease, the net cost for the facility is estimated to be $26,000.
Okay, you'd mentioned last time there's a $36,000 a month payment. I don't see that anywhere. I mean, it worked out to eight four, 8.4 million dollars worth of payments over 20 years to buy into this battery system. I didn't see that number anywhere. Where did that go?
Well, that's, that's worked into the charging and the discharging net costs of the facility.
That's in the ESSA cost?
Yeah.
So the 8.3 million down here?
Yes.
Okay, so the, uh, if, this should happen to go sideways, and all of a sudden there's not cheap energy to buy to charge our battery. We sought to make that payment, correct? The 36,000 a month payment? I mean, we're obligated for 20 years, correct?
Yes.
So as I asked you, uh, earlier, if.
So you're got, you're always gonna be obligated on the, the facility lease.
Okay. So this is predicated on us being able to buy solar energy cheap. What if all of a sudden the people who have the solar farms and decide to put their own batteries in, and they don't want to sell solar energy cheap? Then, then what happens if we get, where, where are we gonna buy solar energy from?
Well, we own, we own our own solar energy currently.
Okay, so we would put our surplus, do we have surplus solar energy currently?
So this isn't just about, about buying energy and storing energy cheap, it's also about, uh, resource allocations. So that's, that's where all, most of the money is over on the, the R columns over there. That's, that's where you're potentially saving all your money, is we don't have to go out in the market and, and purchase resource allocation, which is the law.
So I'd like clarification on the resource allocation. I'd like to state what I think that is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring Stephen, Stephen up by, he's, he's more up to speed.
I'd still like to state what I think I'm hearing. Um, this has two components to it. The first component is the buying and selling of electricity, uh, buying it low and selling it cheap. And I ran, uh, multiple models on that, but I use the midday price and the night price, because there probably will always be a delta on that. And I ran some Monica models, and there's about a 90% probability you will always break even on that. The resource allocation, as I understand it, and I'm stating this so you can tell me if I've got it right or not, is kind, I thought of it kind of like the bank has to hold a minimum amount of deposits to service their customers. So the electric rate or the electric utilities have to hold, hold the capability of delivering. And if they don't have it internally, then they gotta go out in the market and buy it. I don't know if they ever actually get it, just like, I don't know if banks ever actually get it. But they have to be able to document that they have it, and they do that by buying it. And they can allocate, or we can allocate that reserve that we have in storage against that deposit, so to speak. So those are the two components. I think that, do I have that right? That's the resource allocation portion you're, you're talking about?
Yes, so, um, with, with respect to the, the RA savings, um, that, those numbers, that four to six million, that's just additional with this project. So not only looking at the net cycle revenue, which, you know, takes into consideration the discharge revenue. So we, like Mike said, we own shares in solar, uh, resources. We, when it's negative during the day. it's negative during the day, we put it into a battery storage. When prices are very high on electric, or on electricity, or in electricity in the Cal ISO market, we sell it out, you know, so we, we have that, you know, kind of market potential. But then the, the resource, um, the R A savings, that, that's really where we have to, so we have requirements, um, to hit our, our monthly coincidental peak, um, we have to add fifteen percent to that, and that's what we need to have in contracts or in generation facilities that we own, and we need to be able to say, to tell the state, um, the C E C through the Cal ISO, we have the, you know, we have adequate resources to provide energy as necessary, even if it, you know, goes up fifteen percent. So we, that, that's where, you know, there are some months where I think, uh, January and twenty-six, some of our stick facilities are going through, um, some, uh, maintenance. So during that maintenance period, those will be down, we're a little low on our resource adequacy, I think by about three megawatts. This is going to help alleviate that. So we're not, because N C P A has a pool, N C P, the N C P A members, we all look at, the Cal ISO and the C E C look at us as one. So as long as N C P A's fine, we're fine, but we are subject to the cost of generation, whether contractual or, you know, generation facilities owned or shared by other members. So that's where that four to six million, that's typically what we're spending, is about six dollars to ten dollars a kilowatt month.
And that's, that's, like I say, I ran the probabilities, and it was ninety percent we'll break even on the cost of the utility, of the storage versus the selling and buying, and that assumed it wasn't managed, it just was midday and night.
And, and these are just based on assurances throughout the year of what we'll get, you know, everything changes, it, it all-
Yeah, but there's always generally a delta between midday and night.
Yep.
At least when I went out and researched it. But the real savings is the, is the, uh, allocation, is what they go research.
What, what loss factor did you use for conversion?
I think it was ninety percent, but don't quote me on that, I used a ninety percent efficiency.
I think they're running eighty-five is what their C E S O. Which that would reduce you ninety percent a little.
Yeah, a little bit.
Uh, the other variable that's happening, I think currently right now, I think twenty-eight percent of peak hour ba- is coming from battery right now. Can you wait, there's going to be a run of those things on batteries real soon, right? So you're, you're telling me we're almost being mandated, so another question is, if there's a liability component with this, you have a fire, like they had a, who's liable for the fire in this battery system?
We don't own the facility, we're just leasing the storage, so it's the, the Trolley Pass, pro, they're, they're the owners of the batteries, they own, they own the facility, we're just leasing the, the storage capacity.
Are you reading it that way too, city attorney? Me, we've minimized our liability because we're only leasing it?
Well, I think, I think that we have protections in the agreement, um, with regard to indemnification. If there is something that the other entities do that is negligent, or that N C P A does is negligent, then they indemnify us under the terms of the agreement.
Okay. So another question I have is, does this align with our reserve policy, because you're asking to use reserve money that we have locked in with the N C P A? Because if I remember correctly, what, what's our, I know that the city manager hates me to use our cash position, and I don't know, because I don't have any other document, I have to try and get that one. Oh, I, I got it. My, April, uh, April, so, recent one, amazing March. You have Marches right now, I got Aprils somewhere in here, but in our, our electric enterprise, where we're standing right now? We are... We're negative seven-point-nine million? In our cash statement, now you do have fifteen million in the reserve with N C P A, which, you know, we have five-point-eight million minus three million, two-point-eight million in carbon credit money, so where are you going to pay for this? We don't, we don't start paying for what, two or three years, or when do we start paying?
Yeah, well, you don't, you, we pay monthly, when it's, when it's operational. So I believe the agreement is we have to have three months' worth of operational costs in reserve, so it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So is it going to be coming out of reserve, or you're planning on the money coming in is going out? What do you, where do you plan on paying?
Well, it'll come out of our, our monthly deposits with the N C P A, our monthly bill, we have a monthly bill for, for electric purchases, so they'll bill us monthly and we'll either have to add, add funds to the N C P A bank account, or we'll have money on hand at the time, one of the two, I don't know what it'll be when it's operational in two years.
Well, just, good, like I said, I'm looking at our current electric operating cash as a negative seven-point-nine million. So, and we're mandated to have a reserve with N C P A.
Yeah, we have plenty of funds on hand currently with N C P A to cover this, our deposit requirement.
Yeah, but where are we going to get the money to put back into there?
We already have money on deposit with N C P A currently to cover it.
Right, you, yeah, but you told me once that money is getting spent, we have to replace it, where are we going to get the money to replace into the reserve?
It's, well, I'll defer to Christie. She, she handles the finances.
Well, I'm just saying currently right now, we're negative seven-point-nine, I mean, this is Marches, I don't have April, you got Aprils here somewhere, but can you-
We're negative seven, seven-point-seven million, you know, on April, um, at the, for that one line, but we also have the fifteen million in N C P A, and that is, about eleven million of that is reserve, and four million of that is operating. We use some, we put in some money into the N C P A account to be able to invest, and so that's what that balances, the better way to look at this is to see that it's, um, the total balance would be about a thirteen million dollar balance, if you add those three lines together, including the carb and including, um-
So, but likewise, what he says, as we, as we, if that number goes down, then we're having to backfill it with money from somewhere.
Well, it would be just part of our operating costs, and, and that, that is the N C P A power purchase costs that we have on a regular basis, and that's part of the cost of running an electric utility.
So I guess, again, I mean, if we're running in the negative, where do we get the money from? I don't, if you had negative seven-point-seven million, where are you getting the money from to replace money you've taken out of the reserve?
Well, that, that money, that seven-point-seven is, is, and, and this is, it's increasing in value, decreasing in, in the number, every month, we, we see progress in the electric fund. But because of what we had to do a couple of years ago, we are still having to make up that money, so-
I just see when we're in the red on cash, and you, you're going to go into another venture, I get it, but as you're spending money in the deposit there, you have to back, where's, that's just my question as well, I, I mean, maybe we could call in the loan, it's probably what, three-point-nine million dollars, the city's still, well, it's not city now, it's the communication fund owns electric, but, um-
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Ridge.
So, is, the issue you're raising is a, is a obviously valid issue. Is the issue that we're not managing the reserve or the fund balance correctly, independent of whether this particular expense, are we using this expense to say we really need to better manage that fund?
I'm just saying we're in a financial situation that you don't have money, if you're negative seven-point-seven million, how are you going to backfill a reserve? Granted, you have a reserve of fifteen million, you got a little extra that appears in the reserve, you, you did increase it, but when you use that reserve, how do you backfill the reserve if you don't, if you're in a negative balance?
Yeah, that seems like a big issue, but, but I'm not, and I'm not fighting you, but it doesn't, seems like a hundred thousand dollars is not the issue we need to be addressing, it's the seven-point-one million.
Well, and I understand where we got, where we are with that, but, um-
I, I'm not sure what the question is.
The question is, where do we get, what money, let's say you have to spend three-hundred thousand dollars out of the fifteen-point-three million that's sitting in reserve, where do you get the money to backfill that fifteen-point-three million in reserve?
So, we have, oh-
If I could, I mean, it's just like, you know, you're running your personal, your personal finances, and you had, you know, money in your savings account, you're, you're asking how would you pay your P G and E bill, would it come from your earnings, I mean, your, your paycheck? How would this be paid for? It'd be paid by ratepayers, and we, we get a bill every month and we make a payment.
But we're a neg-, but we're a negative.
That's, that's reserves and, and, that's your savings, it has nothing really to do with your operational costs.
So that, is this why you guys raised the rates?
Yeah, that's, we're trying to get that negative seven-point-nine back up.
Is this one of the expenses you anticipated for? So when you guys raised the rates last year, you had fifty, sorry, you had seventy million dollars worth of projects you said you were going to do, is this one of those seventy million dollars worth of projects that wasn't identified?
No, that's, that's, that's infrastructure in the city, that's something totally different.
Something else, oh.
This is more operational, you know, how we, you know, like I said, it's, it's a lot like, when you get bills from your house, when you have to pay your bills, how you pay them, you pay them out of your paycheck. If you have money left over, you could put it in your savings account, and you keep saving for that rainy day, those negative numbers that you're talking about, the positive numbers, that's all our savings.
So your savings accounts are negative seven-point-nine, or seven-point-seven million, so you, you, you can't keep paying operational expenditures, you don't have any money.
We have two savings accounts, a seven, uh, and one is set, negative seven-point-seven, and the other one is positive fifteen, which nets together to a positive.
Except for the fact that you have to hold this with N C P A, you're contractually obligated to have a reserve with N C P A of what, fifteen million dollars? I was at the meeting where you guys said you had to increase it from fourteen-point-nine to fifteen-point-three. So you're obligated to hold a reserve balance in N C P A. If that goes down, you have to take money from somewhere to put it in.
So of the fifteen million, four million of that is not required at N C P A, we have it in N C P A because it's invested in, in their, um, portfolio.
So could it be operating cash then?
It, yes.
Because we've held, well, anyhow, that's, I'd say pretty risky for anybody to want to deal with somebody who's running in a net. So the next question of, is this cost of service to the ratepayers to be doing this? Would this fall under this expense, a cost of service? Or is this a, maybe it could have been a general funding expense?
This is a, a net savings.
Potentially, it could be, it could be an eight-point-four million dollar white elephant too.
I mean-
And, and I, and I bring this up because it wasn't long ago that you guys, you know, as well before most everybody here, the Wi-Fi system, you might have still been around when they did that, and they ran that up to almost five million dollars, and it was going to be a moneymaker, and that didn't work either, they borrowed five, four-point-nine million dollars from the electric fund, and are paying it back over thirty years. The, you know, I mean, that's just my question, I don't, you say it's a net saving.
Is it a general funding expense now?
It's, it's an operating cost for the utility, but there is an, it is a net positive overall, or at least it's anticipated to be, which is why we're pursuing it. And I believe that, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, that N C P A, all of the other cities have, have, are putting into this as well?
There's a handful of them in the staff report.
Not all of them, there's, there's a majority, yes.
Well, let me ask it a different way. Let's assume we decide we don't want to take the risk of the thirty-six K, or whatever it is. You are projecting that we then have to go purchase power for the, uh, allocation, the resource allocation, is that true? Did I understand that correctly?
Not, not currently, we would, but we will eventually have to start purchasing power, yes, resource allocation. There's months that we are short, and we would, we do have to purchase, there's months that we're not short.
And, this plan, this plan-
This helps, this helps us.
Have you quantified that?
Well, it helps us no matter what, because every month we get the resource.
Is it a break even for the expenses? Have you quantified it so that-
Well, like Stephen said, we, we look, N C P A is looked at as a whole, so overall the, the, the agency meets the resource allocation as a group currently, but if you're short individually, you have to purchase, so we might purchase it from another agency.
Well, I under, I understand, but all of this is conjecture's a charge word, I don't mean conjecture.
Yeah, so I, it's, it's, we would, we would have to purchase at times, yes.
Okay, and have you quantified, you must, you must have done some quantification to come up with that four-point-eight mil, or whatever it was that you quoted, and said, this is, so that-
So we rely, we rely on the N C P A to manage our resources like this, they manage our electric plants, they manage the hydro, they manage our, and they produced this spreadsheet for us to help us understand it.
So in your, in, in C A P's calculation-
Yes, so they helped, they helped me produce this spreadsheet, I didn't produce this-
Okay, but you read it and you understand it, I hope.
Yes, I, I reviewed it.
Okay, so-
I did not individually look at every month and analyze which months we bought resource allocation, which months we did not, I did not look at it that in depth.
So the four-point-eight million is what N C A P is projecting, you are going to have to go-
This is the value, this is the value of those, the battery storage, so whether or not we use it, we can sell it, we can sell it to somebody outside of N C P A on the market.
Could you, let me finish my question before you answer.
All right.
So, you have a number in there, I may not be memorizing it correctly, but it was several million dollars that you've assigned as a potential savings of the resource allocation. Is it a fair thing for me to assume, if we don't do this project, based on any N C A P projections, we are going to go spend four-point-eight million to meet our commitment on the resource allocation, is that what that number is?
We will not directly spend it, no.
No?
Not directly.
Okay, then I can't follow that logic.
Councilmember Ball? Uh, I'll be short and sweet here, we've been members of N C P A for decades here, uh, it is one of the methods that currently allows us to provide, uh, less expensive electric breaks than outside of our city limits. Uh, I want to read a sentence here at the very end of the staff report, and then I have a question for you, just to affirm or not. So it says, "N C P A has provided a project cost benefit analysis," which is attachment four, "which shows the city's gross E S S A cost for the twenty-year project life at approximately twenty-six thousand dollars." Again, twenty-six thousand dollars, while the estimated, again, estimated, projected resource allocation savings is estimated to be between three-point-nine and six-point-five million dollars. Now, there's a conservative estimate, pretty, you know, like best-case scenario there. Is it, is, is that correct? That's in the staff report?
That is correct, those are the numbers I received.
So, again, it could be a, I forget the term, it could be a red herring, or an elephant, or any of these things, and there could be a worst-case scenario, we should always entertain that. Uh, but again, this is a-
But again, this is an entity that didn't start yesterday. We've been partners, other cities, smart people intelligently are penciling some of these things out. I guess for me, I love the analysis on the savings, the savings account. I might be a little bit in the hole, but I can also look at ways to save money so that as my resources come in, I have a chance to build that back up more quickly. So to me, it sounds like the cost versus the savings is a pretty big chasm between those. Is that fair?
I believe it is, yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Ball, you also heard him say it could be zero, and it could be a net negative, too. I mean, is that...
It could always be, it could always be the worst-case scenario. It could always be the worst, yes.
And that's what we're trying to mitigate. And until the other day, we didn't even have this number right here. We didn't have this sheet, so, very curious. I appreciate Mr. Luther coming up with it, but I think you understand where we are right now. Anybody else have any other questions? Do I need to do a public comment, city attorney? Why not?
This one was on consent, right? So no, we don't need to. You can if you want to.
Why not? Let's do a public comment, why not?
Karen Hollenstein again. I have to talk to you about Moss Landing. How many of you know what happened in Moss Landing? One of you? The rest of you should review it, because we have to, we have to make certain that that tragedy does not happen in our community. So whatever steps need to be made, so that doesn't happen. Because it's devastating. Battery storage is not safe. Whoever calls it green...
Hello, I have an article a little about Moss Landing. It's UBA's national news. It happened January 17th, 2025. Fire at one of the world's largest battery plants forced evacuations in California. It was, the explosion was so big that it went way up into the air, and all of the ash and lead from the batteries came back down into a area that was along their coast area, was at tributary. It hit other homes. People had to evacuate. It went on and on. Those batteries are connected to each other, it's like a chain. You know, one starts, they all are, are going. And they still will have, every now and then, these hot, they call hotspots or whatever, startup again. Because of all this, they have to have a 24-hour first response team there all the time to watch it, because they never know when it's going to go again. And I don't think I want anything like that in Lompoc. We have 45,000 people here. I know they were talking about putting at the Irony Plant area at one point in time, but I think it would be a disaster for Lompoc, City of Lompoc. And our agriculture, too. We're an agricultural community, and it would be a disaster. And you have to look at the worst-case scenario, and that would be the worst-case scenario right there, when you, when you're looking at these projects. Anyway, thank you.
Quickly, this is in San Bernardino County, so we're not in the Lompoc Valley with this one, fortunately. All right, anybody else for a public comment? Close public comment, bringing back to council, Councilor Ball.
Yes, and just for, just to clarify, just so no one thinks that this is something that it's not. This is NCPA, Mr. Luther. This battery storage, as far as its location, is specifically where?
Ranch Cucamonga.
It's in the San Bernardino County Ranch Cucamonga.
Yes, so again, not here, not in our backyard. All of those things that happened at Moss Landing is definitely an issue, something that should be kept an eye on. I will say that if you go and look at all of the battery investment and storage and backup, and look at all the places that haven't had those issues, I hope that you would consider those as well. The only other thing I'll say is that someone who is a big fan of green technology, battery backup, the whole idea of saving power, is a person called Elon Musk, who just sent a rocket up. So he's a big fan of this technology. And again, it doesn't come without its risks. There is another part of electrification that is highly risky, but we still use it. And that's called the power line. PG&E is constantly working on how to mitigate issues just related to trees being too close to power lines, but we still need it, we still use it. So again, I hope there's clarity. This is not battery backup specifically located in Lompoc. This is a resource for us, because we're members of the NCPA. We're only leasing the opportunity to store some storage. If we can get cheap electricity and we can store it, that benefits our ratepayers long-term. The more money that we can save means we can build back our reserves as a utility, and we can start to invest in mitigating some of these risks that do exist in our town, such as power poles leaning over, too much lines above ground, perhaps. So again, I, that's my two cents on that.
Any other questions? Councilor Starbuck, anything to add? I think I missed you on this one. Who's making the motion? Who's NCPA rep? Are you motioning on this one? No? Councilor Vega, electrical background, are you motioning on this one?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 6769, parentheses 25, approving, authorizing city manager or designate to execute a third phase agreement for energy storage service agreement with Trolley Pass Project LLC.
And Starbuck's got a second on it. Motion by Ball. Okay, good vote. That passes 4-1, myself voting against it. All righty, what's next? Time to go home, right? All right, two minutes, oral communications, your last two minutes of the meeting. Oral communications, two minutes.
Already started. How you doing, Carl Jones? Issue. Remember back when I said, I don't know, Starbuck probably remembers back when y'all started issuing these permits for these trailers, I said these people would be out front with a permit in their window and camping out permanently in front of houses? Well, it's happening. With nice little extension cords going into the house. Like I said, it would happen, it's happening. And then there's also a lot of trailers around, and mobile homes around town that are just parked there forever with extension cords. So some of them are rent in the front of their house, probably out to their buddy, extension cord to the house with a permit in the window, others are out there without it. But the, the extension cords going across those sidewalks are a tripping hazard. I don't know if y'all know, my spouse is visually impaired, and that is a big-time tripping hazard. That's one issue. Another issue we need to figure out is all these electric little motorcycles going around town. I'm seeing a lot of traffic on them. Social media, especially from one side of town, where you got these little group of kids just running around, causing havoc with them things, getting in people's ways, kicking cars, all kinds of stuff. These are things we might want to start addressing more. Try to figure out how, what we can do to mitigate this problem, especially these kids on these little electric bikes, because them things are moving as fast as dang gasoline motorcycle. And they're running around town, not even stopping for stoplights, stop signs, they're just blowing through them. Eventually, one's going to get hit. And I know they're going to come after the person driving a car, not the kid that's acting a fool on an electric bike. But, you know, this, bringing this stuff up y'all's attention. I mean, it's happening. Just over by your son's business, somebody just recently decided to take a dump truck load of trash and just dump it right on the street. They tied the trash to a telephone pole and drove off. I mean, that's more happening.
Anybody else? We'll close oral communications, bring it back to council comments and meeting reports. Councilor Ball.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilor Vega.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Bridge.
I believe the RV topic is coming up on October 21st. I believe that's being brought back to the council. So I know there's a lot of people interested in that topic, that'd be a good time to come on. I would love to see the Public Information Group put out some kind of commercial on the on-demand transit service. See if we can get that out and make it well-known that that capability is there, because that's something to be proud of. So, other than that, no comment.
You got, you got what he asked?
We, we did that today. We pushed out that today.
Wouldn't hurt to do it a few times.
Okay.
I attended SB CAG and ABCD representing the City of Lompoc. We'll Thursday, LAFCO meeting, those who want to join LAFCO meeting, woo-hoo. Just a simple request, I think, is if you could put some information out about the carbon credit rebate? Saying the people that counter, they're coming up and they're wondering, how come I got a $200 credit in my account? What? And they're confused as to what happened. They're thinking there's a mistake, and then city staff is spending a lot of time explaining to them what a carbon credit rebate is, which is more fun than buying a battery. So, if you could do something like that, I just, just push me nothing. Anyhow, with that, we'll adjourn to September 16th, 6:30 PM, regular meeting.